See if we have any waters or anything for people, if there's any. If not, we'll... Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, those over here, and I know there's been some problems getting in the building, we appreciate those over here, and I see a number of our speakers are now arriving. We'll begin the meeting today. I'm Councilman Smith, Chairman of the Committee on Business Growth and Tax Reform. Business growth may be a euphemism, I'm not sure yet, we'll find out, but certainly, we were tasked with a request to look at a number of things. We have three of our city council committees that will be meeting on the various elements of what is going on in the financial marketplace these days. We had our committee meeting last week with Councilmember Cardenas, whose committee is on bonds, and we know that the City of L.A. could not sell one of its bonds recently. I noticed the state of Maine couldn't sell a bond a couple of days ago. A couple of cities in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania couldn't sell a bond for a hospital. The bond market obviously is jammed up pretty bad, commercial paper is pretty bad. The Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting in about two weeks' time to discuss the impacts to our city budget, particularly our revenue stream. This committee's responsibility is to look at two things, and we'll look at two, in three sections today. First, we're going to look at economic forecasts, and we have Bill Allen here and Dr. Nancy Seddow, we appreciate your being here, to give kind of economic forecasts, where you see the economy today. We know it's valid for 24 hours and that's about it, but we appreciate your being here to give us some guidance. We're then going to have a second report from our general, from our city legislative analysts, our C.A.O., as to the budget impacts and what we're projecting, where we're looking, and finally, from the service providers, both internal to the city and external, that provide jobs and creation programs and assistance, and they're going to give us some ideas on where they see the marketplace going, and what we can do to help them. So I'd like to lead off, and again, thank Bill Allen, you're always here when we request you, we appreciate that, and Dr. Seddow, thank you for joining us today. If you would kind of lead us down the path on where you see the marketplace, where you think we will be tomorrow, or the next day if you can, what your projections are, and how deep and how long this problem is going to persist, which I think is one of the bigger issues, and then anything you may know about the bailout program, as far as what it may do to affect the city, and particularly, and I think we're going to ask our CLA and others about that as well, is if there are any provisions in there that are to our advantage that we can utilize. So with that very broad spectrum, I know your expertise is in forecasting, so let's begin with where we're at and where we're, I think we're going.
Alright, the first thing I think I need to say is that we do not have a forecast for the City of Los Angeles, and I'm in the middle of adjusting our forecasts for, for the nation, the county, and the constituents of the county, to build in a recession which is now clearly occurring. We're not in the business of declaring recessions before anybody else, so we haven't, but it is clear from the data that is being issued and the events that we've been seeing of the past few weeks, that the economy is in recession, that the recession is going to be made worse by the problems in the financial markets. And so what I would propose to do is to take a brief sort of status report on the two crises that we have involved here, and, and we'll just look and see where they are today, and these are the issues that have, you know, daily changes, so I'll just make general commentary and try to be, you know, as least out of date as possible by tomorrow. But more fundamentally, what I will do is look at which industries are at risk in this kind of position, because we've been here in terms of the economy before, and so it's important to understand which industries are at risk, in a sort of general sense. And then we'll look at the industry structure of the city, based on the data that we have for the year 2007, and, because then we can identify, for example, what proportion of the jobs in the city are in industries at risk. And then, because we haven't built the forecast, but I already have some idea about what the shape of it's going to be, I can make some comments about the nature of the outlook in terms of depth and duration. That ought to be helpful to you and for your planning going forward. Alright, so we begin with the first crisis, if you will, and that is the plunge that we've seen in the housing market, and it's really affected all parts of the housing market, and essentially, what I've done is tried to draw together the pictures that tell the story. And so the best picture in this case that tells the story for us here in Los Angeles is the picture for California. And we see two things happening here. We look at new home construction, those are the bars, it's on the decline and will decline further, there's just no question about that. But existing home sales now, we're talking about the volume of sales, bottomed out late last year and have been on a steady upturn. And essentially, the reason they have is what catches everybody's attention, which is to say that prices are down. And prices are down because there are a lot of foreclosed homes in the mix now, but it is true that when prices come down, you will draw buyers back into the marketplace who couldn't previously afford the new homes. And so when I talk to realtors, what they're telling me is that sales have gone from perfectly dreadful to something approaching the low end of typical or normal. And that's a strong statement. It's also, I must add, a statement that only runs through August, okay, so it's a highly conditional one in terms of what happens currently. If we look at Los Angeles now, though, we see the same decline in new home construction. This is a forecast for 2008, assuming that the ratio of the first eight months is good for the year, and it won't be, it will be lower than that, but it won't be any higher than this. There's certainly decline in construction, but if we look at existing home sales, we see the same pattern in the bars, where we're looking at sales volumes have turned up, and yes, indeed, prices have come down, this is in the county as a whole. Now, a number of things are happening. As prices come down and sales go up, the level of unsold homes has been starting to fall, and that's an important indicator of approaching equilibrium. The statewide number is seven and a half months of inventory are standing unsold, and that's down from well over 10. And the realtors tell me that six is approximately normal, so we're getting down there, and in the U.S., they were, they're still in double digits. In terms of new home construction, I have data for L.A. County that divides, I don't have it for the city, but this is based on a survey taken every six months, and if you look at the total, you can see that total unsold new homes are coming down, and this is partly because they're not building as many, and also because some of them are being purchased. However, I would add a caution note here, because the gray portion of that total is attached homes. This is where apartments and condominiums live, and many of those are in the city. And so the decline in unsold inventories in the city, based on this data, looks like while it may be coming off, it's not coming off nearly as fast as it would be in the attached, the unattached, the single-family home sector. Alright, so all of this takes place before and is conditional on there being enough mortgage money. And so let's turn to the second crisis that we have underway, and this is financial markets, and this is where things are happening on a daily basis, and a number of different things are going on, and I'll just take snapshots, if that's alright, to sort of give an impressionistic, stylized view of what we can see here. We begin with equity prices. Stock markets are falling everywhere, and we've updated this through yesterday's stock prices, and today closed even lower than what you see there. And I view these from the standpoint of what you want to know, and what's going on in the economy, as fever thermometers. Maybe where low is worse, or a high are fever. And, and so it's clear that people who participate in the stock market are, don't expect much to happen that's any good. Certainly, they don't appear to be aware of anything, for example, like that little uptick in housing that I'm crossing my fingers about. So, but the action really is not in stocks, it's in the fixed income markets, in the capital markets, credit markets. And so the first thing I would observe is that in terms of long-term bonds, over the more recent months, what we've seen is interest rates are coming down for the U.S. Treasury, but going up for everyone else. And how much they're going up depends on how creditworthy you are. The muni bond average, muni bond average is that lower blue line there, so even they've gone up a little bit. So spreads are widening in terms, in terms, which is the way the financial people describe it, for everyone except for the Treasury, and in terms of the Treasury, what we see is a flight to quality. When people are afraid, they buy U.S. Treasuries, even in this day and age. Alright, in the short-term markets, we have what I call the spaghetti chart. This chart begins on the left in early 2007, and normally, the short-term credit markets are a pretty sleepy part of the business. And the interest rates are close to each other, and they're very tight, which is to say spreads to Treasuries are very small. And then, beginning last summer, those spreads widened, and every time you see a crisis of fear, you can look at that bottom line, and you will observe that people are rushing to buy Treasuries, so the rate goes down, to the point where now the rate on Treasuries, far from being up close to, I can't see it, around 5 percent there, is now less than one-half of 1 percent. And that's in a point of extreme fear, and this is even though the Federal Reserve has been lowering its target rate for the federal funds, which is the red line that's down there, the Fed funds market has period upsets, and so that rate is not staying down there. Well, what kind of borrowing is in those two categories that are sailing up? And the answer is commercial paper. Rates are rising fairly sharply, because there is a, that market has come close to closing. And also, the other rate is the LIBOR rate, the rate for someone in Europe who wants to obtain dollars, and those rates are going up dramatically. And they are indications of distress. In order for us to say that this crisis is beginning to resolve itself, one should be looking at the spreads between, again, Treasuries and these other borrowers, and those spreads have not begun to narrow yet. So based on data through yesterday, in this case again, we can say, no, there is considerable distress. Outside these areas, the Federal Reserve and today, other central banks, again, reduced their target rates, their monetary policy rates. In the Fed's case, they announced a reduction from 2 percent to one and a half, but you can see that sometimes the Fed funds rate doesn't stay at 2 percent. So that may or may not be the case, but all of the Western Central banks have now lowered their monetary policy rates in a coordinated move. More importantly, in my view, they have been shoveling hundreds of billions of dollars and euros and yen into the short-term capital markets, so that banks who are, who are unable to borrow elsewhere, at least are able to obtain some liquidity and some capital. And this is helping the situation, but it isn't appearing yet in terms of loans to you and me.
I was going to ask you, because I know that they were talking about the coordinated effort today was going to hopefully create a floor for the marketplace, and it didn't, evidently. So what is that an indication of, then, that even the corrections by the European banks and the U.S. Bank, at the same time, has not given enough confidence back into the marketplace yet?
No, I think what's really happening is that the crisis is so deep and so widespread that is, that an action today will not necessarily show the impact today, because if you were a financial institution with a funding problem today, it's there whether the rate you have to pay is two or one and a half, or indeed, only half of 1 percent. You still have to go find those funds. And what we see in this chart is, financial institutions who rely on the capital markets as a funding source, these are the institutions primarily at risk. They are the ones who ordinarily would be issuing financial commercial paper. That market is shut down. So they're, and so they are now, you know, having to rely on their central banks, and that's why this, this other set of facilities, with all the alphabet soup names that they have, that the Federal Reserve and the European Central Bank have been setting up. That's why they are so important. Now, in terms of the TARP, the program that was just passed last week by the Congress and signed by the President, the funding provisions of that, you know, much of what we're looking at is the plumbing of the economy. It's largely invisible to, to most of us, and so it's the plumber's solution. If banks won't lend to each other because they're afraid the other person will have toxic debt and will go down and won't, won't be able to repay, then the thing clearly to do is to pull all the plugs, you know, all the toxic debt out of the system, and then banks have to decide that it's okay. But they haven't started that program yet, okay, so that one yet has still, if you will, that one's still lying back in reserve, waiting for the program designers to hire the program managers to actually get going. But in that light, the Federal Reserve, for example, announced earlier this week that it was going to make available as much as $900 billion, you know, which is actually more than the $700 billion that was advertised for the TARP. So when I say shoveling, you know, funds into these markets, it's really very, very important that they do so, and the impact will be cumulative, as one institution after another either obtains funds and retires from the scene, or discovers that it can't, you know, acquire the funds, and will either be acquired by another institution supported by its government, or will go bankrupt, depending on the case. So we will continue to see more of these individual rescues in the weeks to come, and they won't be a sign that all of this is not working. It has to be working, because the funds simply have to have gone somewhere. And so there are institutions that are in better shape today because they borrowed last week from the Federal Reserve. It's just that we can't see it on a day-to-day basis, and the stock market's not going to tell us, because they can't see it any better than we can't see it, okay? Alright, now, from that discussion, let's take a look, oh, no, one, two other pieces of this, because the question is whether all of this will affect the economy. And the answer is yes. It affects the economy if the banks who are making the loans to us make, decide to make fewer loans because they can't raise funds in those capital markets. And that's the connection between the two. And one way of measuring that is to look at a quarterly survey of bank lending attitudes. And what this slide shows us is that as of early July, the 50 largest banks in the U.S., 85 percent of them said they had made it harder to borrow for home mortgages and for commercial real estate projects than three months previously. And so you can see that there has been considerable tightening in real estate. Well, we knew that, you know, another way, everybody said it's hard to get a mortgage. Well, this is the banker's view, that it's harder to get a mortgage. And more importantly, from the standpoint of the economy, we're up to the point where 58 percent of them said that it, they were making it harder for ordinary business loans, for borrowers to obtain money from them, and that's where it's really beginning to bite, the businesses in, in Los Angeles, because a number of these banks who fill out the survey are large enough to be among our big banks here. So that's the final piece of it, because, so all of this really does matter to the economy here in Los Angeles. Alright, now, which industries are at risk? We've already pointed out that the construction-related industries are at risk. This is not only construction itself, but also the firms that make windows and doors and bricks and roofing tiles, construction-related stuff. So there are manufacturing industries at risk. Anybody involved in an interest rate-sensitive industry is at risk, because interest rates and by same token, the availability of funds to borrow is difficult. And that means that automotive dealers, for example, and furniture dealers are at risk, because, A, their clients have, their customers have to borrow money to buy what they have to sell, but more importantly, B, they have to borrow money to finance their inventories that show up on the, on the dealer lots and in the furniture stores. So that's an issue. Any firm that has, gets its financing primarily from the capital markets as opposed to another source, either internal funds, or in the case of financial institutions, banks with large amounts of deposits are doing, are in better shape than banks that rely solely on the capital markets. This is why Bank of America might purchase Merrill Lynch, for example. And then finally, there are some other considerations. In particular, firms that are already near the financial edge are likely to be more at risk, simply because they won't be able to find somebody willing to lend to them under the conditions where they're raising credit standards. And small firms, which don't have the financial resources, because they simply haven't been around long enough, those firms are likely to be more at risk than large firms are. I have no data to prove that, but that is what we appear to see. Now, in terms of where we are gaining or losing jobs, we'll look first at the county, because that's where I have the prettiest pictures, and then we'll look at the data for the city. We see for the county in August that employment was down by almost 17,000 jobs, and most of those losses show up in construction and manufacturing and finance. This is not unexpected. I have separately looked at more detailed data, where I've extracted the mortgage finance portion, for example, out of the finance industries, and added in the, the manufacturing of wood products and furniture to the manufacturing industries. And it's clear that from their peak about two, one, two and a half years ago, these industries have lost about 20,000 jobs. So at, through August at least, you could say that most of it was related to the decline in housing. But it is also the case that there has been a sharp decline in sales of new cars and light trucks. And these are new vehicle registrations with personal plates, not business plates, that's how they measure them. And the data in the picture only run through June, and the market collapsed in July, August, and September. So we know it's going to be worse. And through June, that data was down, registrations in 2008 were down about 11 percent, and they were down 15 to 20 percent in July, August, and September, depending on the month you look at. So that's going to be a considerable decline because of sales taxes from dealers. You know the city figures, I haven't got them, but they're sure to be a fairly significant number. We had last July already been forecasting that taxable retail sales in Southern California at large would be down this year. All our July forecasts are likely to get revised down by the time we get around to finishing all the detail, we just haven't done it yet. So, all, you know, but it is already the case in '07 that we were beginning to see severe declines, then related more to housing than automotive, but increasingly to automotive. How are, how is international trade doing? Activity at our ports is down, largely because imports are down, and we are predominantly an import port, and, you know, and so this, this will matter and won't turn up until retail sales and start getting better. The tourism business is not bad, all things considered, but not as strong as it was last year, and...
Let me ask you a question.
Yes?
I saw today in the news that, that dollars strengthening against the euro, against the Japanese yen, other currencies, and it's been the last few days strengthening quite a bit. Will that eventually then will see a downturn in our hospitality and tourism trades, because that has been one of the things that's been really helpful to them, is that our dollar was weak, or so it's better to come here?
It's possible that the dollar's strengthening will hurt if it lasts. The fundamentals in terms of the U.S. current account deficit suggests that the dollar should still be weakening. And I view the current dollar strengthening as more evidence of flight to quality, before people outside the U.S., at its most simple, decide they want, you know, are able to buy the U.S. Treasury, Treasuries that we can see that they've been buying, they have to buy dollars. So I view those two events as connected, and it's not clear to me that all of that strengthening will survive when we finally get to more normal times in the capital markets.
Two days doesn't make a trend.
So far, at least, although it is certainly a remarkable trend in the dollar. Alright, so tourism is doing okay, you know, nothing special, but okay. The entertainment business is doing okay, and it would be really nice if we could get all the labor issues settled and go back to work, because here's an opportunity for the city and the county in terms of its impact on the economy. And then finally, I want to turn to some City of Los Angeles data. If I label as at-risk industries, construction and durable goods manufacturing, because that's where all the housing-related sectors are, and finance and real estate, then what we see is that roughly a quarter of the employees in 2007 were employed in those at-risk industries. Okay, that's the big picture, I think, number that you were looking for. And we've left here available for you, and I've got a copy, you know, you have access to the PowerPoint, but I've got a clean copy here if you want it, so that you can see the details here, the cities, the centers at risk, and then we have two whole pages of other industry sectors. Now, the other industry sectors are, some of them are growing and some of them are not growing, and we need to exercise some care and thinking about them, but, but they are not so clearly labeled. Their fortunes will tend more to the downside if, and to the extent that the economic recession is worse, or if it's better. So let me talk about a few comments about the recession and what to expect going on. Alright, now the recession probably began late last year or early this year. The official committee hasn't met, hasn't indeed thought about meeting yet. Well, they never like to revise their decision, and the data always gets revised, and so until we work through the first cycle of revisions, they may well not choose to. But I did hear a speech by that fellow yesterday, and, you know, and essentially, if we think about it as beginning early this year, and certainly the national data show declining employment, beginning in January, then the typical recession until recently used to last not quite a year. However, the financial crisis and the credit crunch means that there will be extra impacts, and that will, I think, extend and dampen the economy further. So a prudent recession forecast, and that's what I'm about to build, will probably show a declining economy through the first quarter of next year, and it wouldn't surprise me if it lasted longer. At this point, you know, until the financial markets stop, you know, at least slow down the, the rate of, of decline, I'm concerned. And then I see no reason to expect more than a moderate recovery during the rest of 2009. Normally, that recovery period takes perhaps a year, so the economy should then be expanding again by 2010 or 2011. Now, in watching for the bottoming of the recession and then the upturn, I'm actually going to be watching the housing industry, because it was early in, and for whatever reason... reason, it appears that to me that it's going to be early up. This is the traditional old-style model of the recession, going back to recessions in the 1970s and in the early 1980s, and that's what we appear to be seeing again. So I expect that to continue. Now, in terms of whether California and Los Angeles will do better or worse than the U.S., I rather expect the housing situation to resolve itself in Los Angeles sooner rather than later. I would be much more conservative if I were talking to you when you were a city councilman of the City of Riverside, for example. But in Los Angeles, I think we are in better shape than most, but the recession itself is likely to be on the, on the worst side of moderate, is the best way, I think, to characterize it, and certainly worse than what we saw in the early 2000s. Not as bad as the early 90s. Okay, does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, I think, what I wanted to cover.
I really just wanted to follow up with a couple of ideas, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely.
I have a colleague here, by the way, I'll introduce David Flax, who's our Director of Policy Initiatives. David and I have been talking about a number of ideas to help the city during this difficult economic period, because this economic period is not unique to the city. Obviously, it's a global situation. But a city as enormous as Los Angeles, with as many attractive advantages as Los Angeles has, has some unique opportunities, and, and we just wanted to impart two or three suggestions. First of all, do no harm. Try to not add to the tax burdens or fee burdens of the businesses in this particularly vulnerable time for them. The city has made a very wise decision in recent years to lower the gross receipts business tax in small, reasonable increments, and has seen a great benefit from that by streamlining it, by exempting small businesses, by simplifying the number of categories, and by lowering the rates modestly each year, the city's actually seen a greater increase in the overall business tax revenues coming to the city. And we would certainly encourage that where there might be, you know, a desire to balance the city's significant budget problems on the backs of businesses. We would strongly counsel against that as an economic development organization. Second of all, capture the low-hanging fruit that's available to the city. There are a number of projects, again, in a city this large, and with many council offices committed to helping projects, with the mayor's business team committed to helping projects, with service providers like ourselves at the LADC, and I see Roberto Barragon here from the VEDC, other groups that are committed to helping the city grow its business. We're all aware of a number of projects that are at various stages of permitting and approval in the city. Whatever the city can do to expedite those projects, remove any unnecessary obstacles or delays from them. I know there are sensitive projects. I tread lightly on a subject that I know is a sensitive project coming before the council, which is the Providence Holy Cross Hospital in the northeast San Fernando Valley, but it's a perfect example of someone who lives in the valley and was aware that 17 people were transported there after the MetroLink crash and given life-saving care. We need that hospital to expand. We need those healthcare services throughout the City of Los Angeles. I think the council has within its power the ability to move that project forward expeditiously as opposed to hold it up for any reason. There are new green technology companies that are interested in entering the city, some of which we've introduced to the mayor's team or various council offices. We just urge the city to look for a way to really expedite those projects because there are companies wanting to come in this city, bring jobs online, bring capital investment online, increase export activity through the ports. And one of the advantages of a lowered value of the dollar is a desire to do some increased manufacturing here and some increased exporting here, make some of our goods more attractive. The city really does have within its power right now the ability to approve some projects that would bring jobs and tax revenues online quickly into the city. Another thought is, is taking the lead of our entertainment industry, our best-known industry, if not necessarily our largest employment sector in the city or county, it is one of the top employment sectors and clearly our best-known industry. And they have an expression in the industry, I spent 20 years in that industry, it's about using other people's money. When we wanted to produce more films than we could afford in a given year, we would take on financial partners to help finance the production of films. And I think the city should really give a very serious look right now at alternative funding mechanisms for major infrastructure projects, looking at public-private partnership opportunities. There's significant needs at the seaports, at the airports, in the transportation systems, and there is capital available in this country and around the world right now that is interested investing in those situations in the right ways. There are good models of that going on in other cities and states here in the U.S. and around the world, and we would urge the city to look at those models, models that have taken into consideration the concerns of certain labor groups and others. There are models that have found a way to protect the public interest and attract the capital in ways that bring new ideas, new technologies, new systems, new processes to not only attract capital to help the city build more than it can build with its own resources at this moment, but do it more quickly, do it more efficiently, improve the customer satisfaction of those public services. So those would be some of the ideas we would have to.
And I'd appreciate very much if you have some really good models you could show us. One of the constraints we do have and have had for a long time is our charter is very restrictive in, in the way our city can venture outside of its government services. So we're actually looking at going to the voters and bringing them a package of some charter changes that allow a little more flexibility for the city to compete in some of those venues that we currently can't compete in. But I'd like to take a look at any models that you think are particularly interesting as we go forward and bring the voters in concepts. We would like to say, here's what they're doing, we can't do that, and we need to do that.
We'll be happy to bring some of those back. In fact, we're investigating those right now. There's been some interesting models in Chicago that Mayor Daley has worked out that seem very promising and encouraging and may have a lot of relevance here, the LA market and others, and we'll be happy to bring some of those back.
Very good. A couple of questions, and I think as we went through your presentation, Dr., you answered almost everything. Retail sales are, I know that today a number of the, the major retailers, Walmart projected minor, minor increase, but everybody else was in the down 5% to 12% range. Kohl's, Nordstrom's, all the big retailers were looking at 5% to 12% down just for September versus last September. As we look at the credit crunch making the availability of capital to those big companies who have to buy for the Christmas sales period, are they going to have the funds? Do you see some of them in trouble? I had heard that, I think, is it Mervyn's doesn't have the capital to buy for Christmas?
Yeah, well, when, when I was talking about the firms at risk and, and about firms that were operating near the edge, many retailers have been operating near the edge, and we have seen a number of chains declare bankruptcies, and others such as Mervyn's have to shrink in order to try to survive. And that is also a case where firms will frequently use, in their case, not banks, but perhaps factors, and, and factor their, their, their stocks, their in-source stocks, and then you repay the factor after you sell the goods. And, and a number of the factors have not been doing all that well because some of them rely on capital market sources of funds for them. And so the retail sector is one in which not all companies, I don't want to make dramatic statements, I think it's probably true, though, that not all companies will be able to do as much as they wanted to do for the holiday season simply because they will be constrained. Now, it is the case that in recession, sales won't be as high, so I'm not sure whether, you know, falling demand will match falling supply, but, but it is a serious issue, and if not before Christmas, then after Christmas, I wouldn't be surprised to see more problems and more closures showing up in the retail sector.
And Amit, have you made any projections of what the, the Christmas sale quarter's going to look like?
We worry. The numbers in nominal terms are going to be lower than they've been in a number of years. This is a Jack number, and he isn't back yet to put it together. But, you know, but from what I can tell, it looks to me that it's going to be a great deal lower than it was before, so if you looked at last--
In double digits or 5% to 10%?
If what we were looking at last year was an increase in traditional holiday sales of, call it 4% to 5%, then this year, if you got 2% to 3%, I think you would probably feel fortunate. So that the Walmart increase of 2.4% might be the kind of increase we would see going forward.
Okay. Mentioned Bank of America and their acquisition, yet they issued a new stock issue yesterday that generated only half what they thought they'd generate out of it. Is that a reflection, again, of just the liquidity in the market not being there, or just there's no confidence in Bank of America now, being one of our big banks in Los Angeles, obviously, and we invest a lot of money in Bank of America?
I think Bank of America is one of those banks that is advantaged by having a large deposit base. But I also think that they will try not to have to rely on government assistance programs simply because those programs will come with strings. And I am an outsider to the Bank of America process, but it just appears to me that they want to try to be doing it themselves rather than doing assisted deals. And, you know, and they have to find a way to pay for Merrill Lynch.
Yeah.
You know, and they have to find a way to have enough capital so that they won't have to participate in some of these other programs.
Again, Dr. Sudhu knows this area far better than I. I, I do think that we are, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, I do think we're advantaged in LA, having a strong presence from Bank of America and Wells Fargo and other major national banks that are pretty healthy compared to others.
Yeah.
And we also have headquarters banks like City National Bank that has no subprime mortgage exposure, no homes-in-foreclosure, primarily business lending, and still able to lend to businesses. And so that's important economically to us, to have a number of banks headquartered here that are committed to business lending and are able to do that, although somewhat constrained by what's going on in the world, less so than those who are burdened with tremendous subprime mortgage exposure.
And let the record show, Councilwoman Guro has now joined us.
Yes, my apologies, I have transportation committees going on a bit. Just one question is related to Wachovia and Wells and the, you know, have you looked at all what the impact that'd be? I know there's differing opinions and potential lawsuits and all that. It's not a done deal necessarily, and I know Wachovia was just selected as the, our bank along with Wells and another piece of it. So what's your, you know, again, I guess it's probably a little bit of a guesstimate, but as far as jobs and--
I'm not even sure we know yet what the disposition of Wachovia is.
No, we don't.
Is it a decision between Wells--
There is not.
No, there has not. The Fed, the Fed has been hosting, I don't know if that's the appropriate--
Hosting.
I'm not sure they're officially physically hosting it, but, but sponsoring discussions between the three banks involved. And if you think about the issues in terms of Wachovia and Wells Fargo, then there would be some questions in terms of whether there would be overlapping branches, in which case Wells might not end up with all of the branches involved, you know. So it's not clear to me what the disposition of the branches and the employees will be yet, so it's no way a tidy sector.
It's obviously a concern because Wachovia was making a very large entrance into our market--
Yes, yes.
--and into our city, establishing a number of significant offices, regional offices as well as local banking offices and commitments to business lending. So we will feel the impact of the struggles they're going through--
Right, and I know, and maybe it's in the, in the future, I mean, I have a report from our treasurer because she's on the list, okay. When, when you show this, and I hope, I'm not going to go back too far, you've already discussed, but on page 12 in your document, which talks about the industry sectors at risk--
Yes.
And you list the percentage of employment. Are there ones that are greater than others? I know you talked about retail potentially, knowing that after the holiday season, and it clearly, I know, construction has stopped. Are those the two--
Well, residential construction--
Residential construction has stopped, yes.
Has stopped. Non-residential will decline because no new projects are able to be initiated. But the infrastructure construction activities may or may not decline depending on what happens to their funding sources, which is partly under your control.
So these are, you don't have them listed in, in kind of--
In any particular order, no.
Okay. All right, well, I don't, I don't want to go backwards, so I'll, I don't think I have any other questions right now.
Okay.
Did you have one more presentation you said from policy?
Just us.
Just here, it's, okay, great.
If we could be of any help.
Well, we thank you very much. It was very enlightening, not good news, but we need to have that news, and that's part of the presentation we're going to make at the council in another two weeks. So thank you very much. Always good to see you, and thank you. Dr. Sudhu, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A pleasure, thank you.
Thanks for yesterday. Heard it went well. I'll end--
Absolutely.
The second portion, we're going to ask to come forward, be our city CAO, Ray Serrana, and Jerry Miller, our CLA, to talk about, and I asked him specifically also to look at if there's anything in the, I guess you call it the federal bailout, but the TARP requirements, that if there's any silver linings in that for the city, but also to talk to about where you see the impacts going, and primarily what we can do as a city to our business. And that would be a difficult one, obviously, because we're not really funded to do that, but there are things we can do, and certainly Bill suggested a few things that really would be easily attained in our ability, and that is to help low-hanging fruit projects that are out there that we can get going. Obviously, no new taxes would be another one. I think the mayor said that yesterday, so that's certainly within our purview, but I'd like to hear from you, your viewpoint on where we're at at the moment, as we particularly prefer the next FSR as well. So Jerry, you want to leave?
Sure, I'll, I'll start briefly. At least in terms of the bailout bill, there, there's really nothing coming directly to the city. You know, as you know, previously from some other bills, there's some relief for foreclosed housing, for example, so there's some direct grants from HUD. And there, and there are, there is assistance to homeowners in the bailout bill as well.
Is that through the lending institutions or through what source?
Some of that is still being worked out and how it's going to be implemented. There's certainly through the lending institutions, there's some talk to working with those institutions to restructure, you know, some of the mortgages, for example, that have become unaffordable, you know, converting them to fixed-rate mortgages and assisting in that vein. But again, much of this is just now being implemented. You know, clearly, the intent of the package was to, I think, as you heard previously, to sort of free up the credit markets and, and get money flowing again and try to get some of the assets off the books of some of the institutions that were really causing everything to freeze up. There is some tax issues and extensions, there's some benefit, and we're still trying to find out exactly what that is for the entertainment industry. Again, that doesn't come directly to the city, but it assists, certainly will assist one of our primary industries as well. And extension of some, you know, individual tax exemptions and, and some dealing with the alternative minimum tax and other issues, which, again, helping the citizens and the property owners within the city. But again, there's, there's no direct, that we've been able to find, direct funding coming from the bailout package to the city.
Okay. And as Dr. Sudhu mentioned, the mechanisms of TARP haven't been worked out yet, so this will be a painfully long process, probably. But is there, I mean, is there an institution within the city that can keep an eye on that, that we could in any way assist either the financial institutions and/or the single property owners to find their way through those mechanisms when they're created? Or is that just someone would look to the private sector folks which are out here?
Well, certainly, as, as things develop, we'll be monitoring it and as things are implemented. And again, it depends on, you know, what the nature of the assistance is. There may be some opportunity to, again, enhance the previous HUD funding for foreclosed houses. And depending on how they administer, you know, the assistance to homeowners, there certainly may very well be a role for the Housing Department and/or the CRA to help administer that and, and get that, get that funding to the individuals out there that need that funding.
Serrana?
Yes, I actually would sort of like to dovetail on that. I mean, there's certainly, there's some actions and legislation that's been put out there on the federal level. I think we also heard a couple of days ago Attorney General Jerry Brown was struck a deal trying to work on the state level as well. And, and certainly, we look forward to, as the details come out, and how we can sort of get housing, and I would suggest housing getting involved, and how we can provide some relief to the residents that are perhaps having some difficulty at this, this time. I do want to actually, you know, thank the EDC coming in, certainly some of the data that you'll see in the next FSR. Some of their nice little graphs go right along with the graphs as we saw a little bit earlier. I mean, we've been tracking the state receipts as far as sales tax, and then they've been dropping, and we're going to see the same thing. Everyone's been talking about sort of the, the lack of funds both at, you know, the large institutional level, but it is also the person that's out here on the street, out on Main Street. And I was struck by a notification a couple of days ago that they were saying in August that consumers paid down debt for the first time in 10 years. It reflects a number of, a couple of things. One, people are really concerned about their finances, their personal finances, and what's going to happen. Are they going to be able to retain their, their job, are they going to make their mortgage, et cetera, et cetera. We have been, you know, as a society, certainly trying to-- We have been, you know, as a society, certainly trying to leverage ourselves and sort of, sort of, how do I say, fund the, the machine as far as purchasing, you know, homes and items, consumer goods, and what has happened now, I believe it sort of has caught up with us, as we've had this asset, what I'll call the larger asset bubble, it's sort of burst, and now we're coming to reckoning. So consumers paying down debt, which is a good thing, but it also does take money out of the economy. And essentially, we're seeing that in our sales, and as has been reported, our Christmas, our fourth quarter is going to be slowing down tremendously, and we're going to have to make arrangements and then how to deal with that, so.
How, how far behind do our receipts from the state run as far as sales tax goes?
We're usually about three months behind.
Three months, so what you're getting right now was beginning of summer?
Yes, we basically got the second quarter of 2008.
And Dr. Sidhu talked about vehicle registrations and a dip there. When do we get our VLF?
We actually, since the state a couple of years ago made that whole VLF switch with property tax, we actually don't get as much as we used to. It actually comes through our property tax now instead of what we used to get through VLF. But we have seen certainly the drop off in, in sales on new autos, and that is going to hit us as we go forward.
And have you seen any increase in, and they're talking, she was talking about a moderate increase in home sales, although at a lower price. Are we seeing that in the transfer tax, or how far is the lag on that tax?
That tax is anywhere from, from three to six months. We, I did see that notice today on, on some of the sales could be up, but as far as our actual receipts, our document transfer, we had budgeted approximately 128 million, and I think, we think we're going to be down about 10 just in that category alone, given just the drop off in both volume and, and actual price.
And, and the documentary transfer tax is based on the sale price, it's a percentage? It's not a flat fee?
Yeah.
So, so that adjustment is one of the reasons on the 10 million. The other is on the business tax, I know, and the last, and that relates to, as we see some of the businesses going out of business. Are we, refresh my memory, in our last FSR, and whether or not you can preview a little bit the next FSR, how our business tax...
Certainly, I...
Because that's 400 and something million, right?
Yes, it is, 460 some million dollars, it's a huge piece of, part of our revenue. I do have to say, I think the Budget Finance Committee and Council were very prudent. I know we had some discussion as far as where we would go this year on our revenue growth, and in both sales and business tax, we were flat. And, you know, six months ago, there were a number of projections that said, well, we were going to still see anywhere from a 2% to 3% growth, and fortunately, in those categories, we kept our sales at basically zero growth. We are concerned, I mean, when, when we're talking about sales, and certainly that, there's a correlation right there with our business tax, if we're going to see a drop off in sales, I, we're going to see a drop off in business.
They move together.
They move together. We won't actually see those numbers until early next calendar year as receipts come in, but certainly we're going to be taking a very close look at that with, with Office of Finance, and we have some concerns.
We also looked at, I can't remember who was telling me this this morning, but I think they were looking at that MWD and MTA and others were looking at the interest rate changes, and that that was impacting their budget, that they'd been dependent upon a certain rate of return or the interest that they were getting on some of our dollars. Do we, have we looked at that yet? And I don't know how much of our borrowing...
It'll turn investing?
Yeah, I think, I think probably...
Well, I, I know the treasurer will be addressing you, it's certainly an issue with the city pool, and it'd be an issue with the pension systems as well. Those would be, the pension system was moved out over a longer period of time, but, you know, clearly, interest rates and the stock market going down, and real estate going down, and, you know, very diversified portfolios, but unfortunately, everything's going down.
But I know there's not that, you know, a lot of ours are longer term investments or, you know, so I don't know what part of our whole portfolio of revenue where there's any that have, you know, interest bearing, so to speak, that's a simplification of it, but that are interest bearing that's changing based on the economy. So as you maybe come forward...
We'll take a look at it, and certainly we're going to meet with both pensions and LACERS, discuss their portfolios. You, they're anywhere, if I recall, roughly about 6% in both domestic and the international equities, and certainly they have, I think it's roughly around 10% or so, 8 to 10% in property. And certainly, we don't, both of those asset classes, you know, have been hit tremendously in the last several months, so.
I know, I know this is Greg's, because he said this the other day, and mine and others, which is, although we differ on the DNA, but other than that, we're okay. Is the issue of, of really trying to adjust now and not wait, because I think in past years, and that's why the FSRs every other month is really important, to do that, because I think if we wait till April to make any major changes in our budget and what we're doing, it's too late. And then we, we'll have to find whether it's 200 or 400 million dollars, and it's so much tougher than here when we can literally stop some programs now. It's much harder when they've been in existence for a year than it is a few months, and to looking at, and before we're hiring in certain positions. So I know you're going to come forward in that FSR as well, but I think being fiscally responsible on that ways.
Certainly, we're happy to start the dialogue.
And one thing also I'll add, we'll certainly be working with Ray on, but, you know, going forward, we're pretty well protected from property, the property tax standpoint from Prop 13, but the, but the payment rate is a huge exposure.
Collection, yeah.
And depending on how deep this recession goes and how much difficulty people are in, we're not going to know what that payment rate is going to look like until really December.
Right.
And would a 1% drop in, in our payment rate is 15 million dollars?
It's roughly about...
Roughly about 10 to 15 million dollars, a 1% drop in the rate of payment.
I know, I've been talking to a lot of people who have, who are having difficulty with people paying right now. And so everything from lawyers to different, you know, probably other kinds of...
Council members.
Council members, yeah.
Bill had to do that yesterday.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll actually include some, sort of some charts on some foreclosures and things in the report, and we'll use some, some updates on those.
And your FSR is going to be released on Friday, is that correct?
We're probably targeting...
You said Friday.
Didn't say which one.
Yeah, maybe Monday.
We want to make sure that we have a complete picture for you, so.
Because I know it's supposed to come to budget on the 20th, so, or 22nd, whatever that Monday is.
It was changed to the 27th.
Oh, it was changed to the 27th?
Yes, yes, yes.
One thing I'd like to ask, if you could add, from this committee request, when you come to the, to the Budget Finance with the FSR, if you take the testimony of Dr. Sidhu and some of her charts, and see if you've adequately looked at the impact, if you've, you know, analyzed the same kind of numbers that she has on, on some of our revenue streams, and where those will be affected. So a lot of those charts were very relevant to our revenue streams, and I think we need to take those into account as we project out for the rest of the year.
I would agree. I mean, we, we look at our hotel, I mean, we had put in 6% to 7% growth, but that's with a weaker dollar. I mean, our dollar's getting stronger, you know...
That was two days ago, like you said, that's, that's not a trend, so.
You're right, it's not a trend, but as you know, the other economies are now experiencing problems as well, and I, I'm not sure whether we're going to hit that number. And certainly as we, we go forward, as far as our forecast in 10, 11, you know, overall we're looking at a 2%, a 3% growth, with some pickup in, in basically the second half of that year in the sales and, in business, or basically economy sensitives. Whenever the timing and when we hit that uptick, you know, you know, it is, is, if we had that crystal ball, we'd all be rich.
Yes, right. Nobody appears to have that crystal ball, unfortunately, the problem. Well, thank you very much for all of your testimony, and we'll add that additional request to the report, Budget Finance. And you were mentioning, you were talking about credit spending, people buying, paying off their credit bills, I mentioned this in committee the other day, so you heard it, but George Will said the other day that for many, for a decade now in Washington, D.C., the real chant was, the government's got to act more like the American people and balance their budget and live with their means, and the problem is the American people started acting like the federal government, and that's why we're in so much trouble. So I think there's a lot of validity to that. Thank you very much. And the third and final portion of our testimony will be focused around the institutions that will be helping businesses both internal in the city as well as external. So I think we've got room for the five people that are here, I believe, Antoinette Cristovol from Office of Finance, if you can come forward. I don't see Cecilia here, is there someone here from CRA?
Brent's not here.
Brent's, yeah.
Not here.
Okay. And then Richard Benroth of CDD, and Roberto Bergan from VEDC, and I didn't see Greg Iris, is there someone here from Workforce?
He's here.
Good, there you are, stuck in. Greg, and then Sean Arian from the mayor's office, or I know Helmy's not here. And that should be five people in five seats, I think.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you? Hello. Hi, Greg.
Yeah.
Hi, very good. And who, we'll start off with Antoinette.
Ladies, ladies first.
We were just talking about some of the issues that are...
Right, Antoinette Cristovol from the Office of Finance. I just want to echo what Ray Serrana, the C.A.O., spoke about relative to the revenue outlook for the city of Los Angeles. I think we do need to monitor closely the economic, economically sensitive tax revenues, that's the business tax, the sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and the parking users' tax. One thing that I can say, at least through September, we are on track for those taxes. But as was indicated by Ms. Sidhu, the collapse of the market, you saw that in July, August, and September, and so we can expect to see a drop off in our revenues in the second half of the fiscal year. Now, for business taxes, as Ray indicated, most of that revenue comes in the second half of the fiscal year. But one of the things that is, is important to the L.A. base, we have a diverse base of businesses, but we do have a large number of small to medium sized businesses, which basically are the backbone of the city of Los Angeles. And those businesses, businesses are struggling from the standpoint of getting credit to be able to, you know, maintain their inventories and also to, to keep their employees on board. So there is an expectation that we may not be able to meet our business tax revenue target. And I do want to correct Mr. Serrana, we do have a growth factor in our business tax estimate, it's a 1% growth. It's not significant, but given that the sales figures we think are going to be negative growth, I think we, we will need to monitor business tax revenues very closely.
And what's 1% of your business tax revenue?
That's about 4 million.
About 4 million?
4.7 million, give or take. But, you know, every, every dollar counts.
1 million's a lot.
Right.
It used to be a lot, but it's a lot now.
Yes, yes. The economic sensitive revenue, revenues, just to let you know how that fits into the overall L.A. picture for general fund revenue, which is used to pay for essential services, the budget's about $1 billion. So, I mean, that's a large percent of, of the revenue that's used for general fund purposes. The documentary transfer tax, now that particular revenue source is down, we, we see that through September. It's, it's probably down about 10%. It will likely continue to drop, and it may be that we will be needing to make some adjustments by the end of this calendar year. Certainly, we can look and see, try to maintain things, but given what's going on in the housing market, and hopefully this federal rescue or bailout plan will work, and there is, you know, we do address the, the matter with the homeowners losing, you know, their, their homes and restructuring their mortgages, perhaps, you know, there will be some recovery there, and hopefully we will have more housing sales.
But from Dr. Sidhu's testimony, as well, it's, all the experts are saying that this is not going to happen quickly.
Right.
So by the end of the year, is not a likelihood that we're going to see a major...
Right, that's why I say I think we're going to need to monitor that very closely. We, we are not seeing any, we're not meeting the budget presently through the first quarter of this fiscal year, and so it is likely that we may need to make some adjustments by December of '08. The utility users' tax, that, that represents telephone, electric, and gas taxes, those are progressing very well. We are about 11 million, give or take, ahead of budget. As you know, with the communications users' tax or telephone tax, there was a rate cut of 1%, and we did factor that into our budget. What we are seeing is that it's, we are ahead of the budget, and so what that means is that the broadening of the base of the telephone tax is, we're seeing the benefit of that from a standpoint that the reduction that we thought we might be seeing over time, we're not seeing it at this point. It's still early, the rate reduction went into effect in March of '08, and so it's still early for that. But what we're doing in Office of Finance, you know, we have a compliance program where we're actually identifying these telephone operators that we think, providers that might be doing business in the city, and asking them to come forward and comply. So just, you know, to cut to things, I think for the near term, we do need to monitor our revenues, particularly the economy sensitive ones. The next, say, 24 months, I, I think that maybe by the 24th month, we'll see some stabilization in, in our tax revenues. In the meantime, I think we need to really monitor our costs, our expenses, because it may be difficult to sustain the revenue growth or expectation to offset that, so we do need to monitor that closely. And in terms of employment, if the employment rate continues to rise, that definitely will have an impact on the business revenue within a city.
One question I have is on grocery receipts tax, which come up in January. Are we looking at a larger delinquency rate than normal? Are we doing anything? Have we thought about anything as far as helping people get through that, make their payments on time or whatever?
We're, we're looking at options that we could potentially provide. You know, one of the things that is very important is that as part of business tax reform, there was a rate reduction package that went to effect, and on January 1st, which is the start of the business tax renewal season, there will be another 3.9% rate reduction. So we think that that will definitely help the business community from the standpoint that they would be paying lower taxes. What does that 15% mean overall? It means that the business has received about $60 million in business tax rate reduction. The, the offset to that is that because of the rate reduction, the business tax reform, and increased tax compliance efforts within the Office of Finance, at least over the past four, four years or so, we've seen over a $100 million increase in business tax revenue. So, and that's what a rate reduction, so I think things are going well. But we do need to try to identify ways and things that we can do to help the business community. One of the things that we do have in place that's always been there is that we have the installment plan, so if a business owner wants to pay on an installment basis, that is available to the business owners. The small businesses, we want to make sure that they, they file timely so that they can get the exemptions that are out there available to them, and we will look at other options.
Do we really advertise it that well? Because I remember when I had my business, I didn't really even know about that, so...
One of the things that we have done each and every year with business tax reform, and when we were able to get funding, and we have been for the past four years, we have advertised about the tax reform and the small business exemption and other exemptions that are available, not only to small businesses, but to the entertainment industry and others. We've done that through print media, that's through, you know, various newspaper, newspapers. We've advertised on radio stations, mainly the news radio stations. On our website, we, we have brochures that we provided to council offices as well as other business organizations and chambers of commerce, in addition to just making that information available on our website. So we have, we have actually, and we also have made the information available in multiple languages because we think that that's key, too. So we do continue to, to promote that, and one of the things that you will find, Council member, when we go to your committee for the rate reduction, the 3.9%, we will be seeking some funding for an outreach program.
Very good. Might I suggest, and I'll turn to Ms. Grohl, might I suggest that you get that information to the council offices? All of us, I think, have some sort of email newsletters, and it'd be good to get that information out to people that just don't even know that's available. We could help you with that.
Okay.
And I, I think, you know, yesterday, although they said Greg Smith was there, it was actually your Mitch, Mitch Engelder, but at the United Chambers of Commerce lunch in the San Fernando Valley, which had, gosh, it looked like 600 people there. These chambers are really, you know, and if there's a way even, we can make sure that those, those chambers are distributed, I know you probably do outreach to them, but even a press conference or something around that time, I mean, in a normal year, no one would cover it.
We might have to break the mayor's arm to get him into press conference, but we'll try.
But I think that might be helpful in those times, because we do see an increase when there is some, some television or radio coverage that we do, and I know you've even done PSAs...
Right, we've done public service announcements.
On KFWB and KNX, I've heard them on that, which has really been fabulous. But I think people are going to start as the end of the year looking, not really be, they'll be stressed on what they're having to do without understanding what may have been offered to them in the past.
Right, and just one, if I could just add one other... Right, and just one, if I could just add one other thing that we do, we do hold tax seminars annually with the California Society of Certified Public Accountants. And so, we hold that, because those accountants typically are preparing the renewal forms for the business owners, as well as we hold conferences with the law firms within the city, because they do, they're the ones that are litigating, you know, on behalf of their client for business tax purposes. So, they want to make sure that their client is properly reporting the tax and that they're advising them appropriately. So, we do hold conferences every year, and that's been very useful and helpful as well.
Right, Mr. Bimbo, thank you. And I think from this point on, we're going to talk a little bit more about business in general, and how we can assist you, how you can assist us in keeping them vibrant.
Okay. Thank you, council members, for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. As you know, at the Community Development Department, we share economic development, or actually, we, the Workforce Development Division and the Economic Development Division work hand-in-hand. So, I'm going to restrict my remarks to economic development, and Greg Irish, the executive director of the Workforce Investment Board is here, and he'll talk about the workforce side. So, I'm going to talk primarily about economic development and businesses, and Greg will talk about workforce development. EDD conducts a variety of economic development activities, all geared toward revitalizing the economy here in Los Angeles through job creation, job retention, business expansion, particularly in disadvantaged areas. One of our most popular programs is the HUD Section 108 loans. It provides below-market gap financing to medium-to-large-size industrial and commercial projects located in economically distressed areas of the city. This program's been around a long time, and most people are familiar with it. However, it's, we're getting a different kind of reaction to it in the crisis that we're in today. Due to the lending crisis, EDD has recently been asked by developers and business owners to become a lender of first resort rather than the lender of last resort, rather than just a provider of gap financing. We were usually last ones in, and we would fill the gap. Because of the lack of credit that's available now, they look at us more favorably than they have in the past, because compared to what's available out there in the commercial marketplace, we offer some relatively good terms. So, there's more demand now for 108, which is good. It helps us get money out the door, but in the long run, it may not be as good, because we, the program was designed to work hand-in-hand with first lenders. And so, we are concerned that there is not a lot of money out there for the first loans, and a lot of people coming in for gap loans.
How much, do you have a question? How much 108 do we have available coming from HUD, I know, and the Community Development Bank, and all the things that happened with...
It's over $200 million. Right now, we have about $142 million in the pipeline, representing about 13 projects. And if all those projects get done, that's about 2,500 jobs that will be created. Now, we are concerned, because some of these commitments were made, I mean, just 30 days ago, we were in a different world. So, today, nobody has come in that I'm aware of that says, you know, "I want out, you know, this project is not going forward." We hope that doesn't happen, but we realize that this crisis is continuing, and there are some projects that, you know, may get reconsidered if it goes any deeper than it is right now.
Have you outreach to those entities to say, you know, what's going forward? Because again, if you're the last resort, which 108 is always in, and so, you're the...
If those first lenders fall out, we will definitely hear from them saying, you know, gee, it looks like we can't do this, or we want to try to restructure this, or maybe we can do it all with the 108 or some other...
Right now, it's, you have about 60 million?
Right now, we have $142 million...
That's out.
...that's committed.
Right, but you have 200, you said...
We have over $200 million available to us.
Right.
So, we still have money or authority to commit.
And tracked by our future block grant dollars.
That's correct. That's correct.
So...
All right. So, if those projects go forward, there's 13 of them, that's 2,500 jobs, and that's...
Significant.
That's a significant number of jobs. We also have the industrial development, empowerment zone, and the nonprofit bonds that we do, and all those are geared toward essentially the same thing, to create jobs. And again, it's low-cost financing available for land acquisition, major equipment purchases, construction, rehabilitation, or business expansion. We have industrial development bond financing, that's restricted primarily to manufacturing businesses. We are very, very concerned, as everyone is, about the shrinking industrial base that we have in the city and the shrinking number of manufacturing jobs. Those are good jobs, we'd like to see more of those, and the industrial development bond program is designed to assist those types of businesses. We have $126 million in seven city-generated nonprofit industrial development and empowerment zone projects in our pipeline right now. Bond financing has become more challenging due to the difficulty borrowers face in obtaining commercial letters of credit or private institutional placement. So, again, you know, we haven't, they haven't stormed our doors saying, "We want out," but we're keeping our ears open, because the situation is continuing.
Are you hearing that any projects are still viable, but slowed down and stopped for now? They're just saying, "We need a timeout"?
I don't get a sense of that, to me.
No?
We have not so far.
Good.
We have not so far, so we got our fingers crossed on that. Again, that $126 million represents about 1,500 jobs. So, if you add that with the 2,500, we're talking, you know, 4,000 jobs now for those, just those two programs alone. We have pursued the idea of a small business loan program. I believe Mr. Barrigan's going to talk about that, so I won't steal his thunder there. But the state and federal business tax incentive zones, the SEDs zones, which you probably heard about when we brought them here to council for approval last year, that allows business owners to take advantage of hiring credits worth over $37,400 over a five-year period for each new eligible hire. So, again, another incentive to hire people.
And what are the eligibility requirements?
You have to be in an impacted area, which is primarily a low-income area, and providing living wage jobs. Also included, also includes accelerated depreciation on tangible property, a credit for sales and use of taxes paid on machinery and equipment, and a 35% electric rate reduction for new and expanded businesses, and reduced city fees. So, there's a package of benefits that are available for the eligible firms that take advantage of the program. The federal empowerment zone offers a hiring credit of 3,000 per year for eligible employees, access to empowerment zone bond financing, and other tax incentives. The federal renewal community zone offers a hiring credit of $1,500 per year for eligible employees. Federal zones are slated to expire at the end of 2009, unless legislation is approved by Congress to extend this program. The council approved the resolution this year in support of the legislation, so obviously, we want to see the program continue. Estimated value to Los Angeles businesses of SEDs hiring tax credits for 2007, '08 is $21 million. So, again, that's not a drop in the bucket, that's a substantial amount of money. The number of hiring tax credit vouchers approved during that same period of time is 15,586. So, that's 15,586 workers who are making living wages, living in impacted communities. So, again, a very significant number. The estimated number of new hires resulting from hiring tax credits is over 3,000. So, you know, you add those jobs up, that's a lot of jobs that we're talking about here. And then, of course, we have the Business Assistance Program, commonly referred to as LABAP. And this program funds direct services to business owners, existing and potential entrepreneurs. Services are provided in a classroom setting, in multiple languages, at night and on weekends, and one-on-one technical assistance is also provided. Eligible businesses are those with fewer than 10 employees, again, these are small businesses now, fewer than 10 employees with annual gross sales of less than a half a million dollars, or those located in empowerment or renewal zone community, renewal community zones. These zones kind of overlap each other, and if you're eligible for one, you're eligible for another, so it has a multiplier effect, and it does give us a lot of bang for the There is a component of the LABAP program, which is called targeted, the Targeted Retail Component, which provides technical assistance to businesses looking to locate into specially targeted retail districts, including downtown, the downtown historic core and Panorama City. And the services include marketing, site location, store layouts, business plan development, and microloans. The number of jobs created by the LABAP program between April 1, 2007, and March 30, 2008, which is the federal fiscal year, is 286 jobs. And that's a program that we spend about...
$2 million on annually, LABAP?
LABAP. About $2 million annually. And that, unfortunately, over the last several years, we've taken a cut in that program, so...
40%?
40% cut, so we are feeling a little stung by that.
Okay. Ms. Grule, have any questions?
No.
If we could add to the instructions that we asked the mayor's office to report back on the status of the federal legislation when we bring this to council.
Councilmember.
All right.
Good to see you. Good to see you, councilmembers. You heard from LEDC, I guess, about credit markets and stock market and local industry indices. I guess, just as dismal is the labor market. Currently, unemployment in the city of Los Angeles is 9%. Hasn't been that way in 12 years. In the county, it's 7.9%. So, in the city, there's 174,000 people currently unemployed. Worst it's been in a long time. As you know, in the national economy, we've shed, what, three-quarters of a million jobs this year? Last month, 159,000 jobs alone. We've got more people competing for fewer jobs. So, it's going to be tough, and any project that doesn't move forward will have an impact on unemployment. We're estimating that it's going to take longer for folks to become employed, to become employed. A number of different businesses are laying off individuals. The services that we have to offer through CDD, of course, we've got layoff aversion services for a business, where we can go and talk to a business about, instead of laying off folks, maybe they can access our services to retrain if they intend to change their business approach. We can also go out and talk to employees who are identified for layoff and identify the different benefits that are available for them in terms of unemployment, helping them with retraining. But the fact of the matter is, there are fewer jobs right now, and the labor market has been adversely impacted by what's going on throughout the world's economy. We get $50 million a year to fund various workforce development activities in the city of Los Angeles. We have 18 work source centers. Those are centers strategically placed throughout the city that can provide assistance to anyone who's looking for a job, who's interested in knowing about the benefits available to them when they're unemployed. The mayor has also established, within six of those work source centers, advisors who can provide assistance on how to budget and get through these trying times, in terms of financial advice, foreclosure advice, et cetera. We also have 13 one-source centers, which are centers that serve youth between the ages of 18 and 24. But quite frankly, we've got to look to the federal government as to what approach, and being that we're in an election year, what will happen after, and what resources will be available to deal with the unemployment crisis. We, of course, need, and every state needs, an extension of unemployment benefits, because, again, it's going to take longer for folks to become employed, so that will help. The problem right now is that California's Unemployment Trust Fund is nearly exhausted, which will mean that California will have to borrow from the federal government to pay unemployment benefits. If that happens, that will result in an increase in taxes statewide on businesses. So, it's a sort of give with one hand, take with the other. Again, the mayor and the council have advocated for an extension of unemployment benefits. The mayor's gone back to Washington advocating for more money for young people in terms of job training, summer jobs, year-round jobs, et cetera. We think that's a beginning. And we're looking at all of our plans, CDD and the Workforce Investment Board, in light of what's happened over the past 30 days, to reexamine our strategies for the expenditure of $50 million, to see whether there's some other approach we should take. And we're looking at best practices throughout the country in light of what's going on. We can probably learn from some other jurisdictions, but I think all of us are trying to figure out. We've never anticipated that this would happen. We're probably trying to figure out how best to respond to this crisis. But we do have services available, and they can be accessed by simply going to CDD's website or the Workforce Investment Board's website, where businesses can actually access that website. If they go to that website, it explains the services that are available, basically layoff aversion services and services to workers who are targeted for layoff as well. That's the extent of it.
Okay. What is the status of our work source centers? Are they stretched to their capacities? Or are they...
Yeah, it's interesting, last night on one of the major television stations, they actually, folks are paying attention to what's going on in those centers, and they actually highlighted one of the centers, if I recall, it may have been in council member Grule's council district, talking about how many folks are coming in looking for jobs, how long it's taking them to find jobs. Again, they're providing the services, they've leveraged using our money, they've actually leveraged $21 million of additional money, again, even though we provide them with funding, most of them are nonprofits, so they're able to go after grants from private foundations, et cetera. So, we actually bring $21 million in addition to federal money and government money into the system, so that's helping. But they're stretched thin. This is a time, again, that we didn't anticipate, we didn't anticipate the demand for services, and we expect it to get worse, quite frankly.
Is there any potential for additional federal funding to increase the services besides unemployment insurance?
To hear both candidates speak, they've all got these great plans that they anticipate implementing in January, we'll wait and see.
I hear a sound of skepticism.
No, no, actually, I'm being the optimist. Things can't get any worse, they got to get better. Councilman, in normal times, I think, we service 100,000 folks through universal access, and now, we're projecting this year, I think, 130,000.
Yeah.
So, that's a 30% increase in folks, you know, coming in to...
With no additional money.
With no additional money. We'll keep you apprised. Again, we're going to reexamine our service delivery strategy, see where we need to change in light of what's gone on over the past 30 days.
Good, thank you. Mr. Barrigan?
Good afternoon. Um... Yeah. Right there. Roberto Barrigan, president, Valley Economic Development Center, VEDC. We also run the San Fernando Valley Financial Development Corporation, we're the sponsor of the Brooklyn Development Federal Credit Union. Thank you for having us today, and let me kind of, just quickly, because in all the Wall Street discussion, there has been kind of insufficient explanation of what this means to business. And when I say business, I mean small and medium-sized businesses. We know what, how it means to large corporations and large companies. But the fact is, credit is the lifeblood of business, and the current financial crisis threatens to cut off credit, not just to corporations, developers, and governments, but also to retail stores, manufacturers, professional firms, food processors, distributors, healthcare providers, mom-and-pop shops, contractors, repairmen, and bakeries. What we're talking about is saving local businesses such as Window World and Chatsworth, the Coop and Studio Cities, Ecoute Propellers and Van Nuys and the San Fernando Flowers of this city. And as important, their employees, and as important, their vendors who sell to them, and in many cases, you and me, who basically buy, sell, and maybe work for them. When people talk about credit, unless we're buying a car or a home, as a consumer, we view credit, and we shouldn't, probably most people in this room view credit as something, as a means to buy something extra, the big-screen TV, pair of shoes, something in addition. And for business, but for business, credit allows delivery of inventory today to a local retail business and paid tomorrow. Construction today of a new construction building and paid next week. New product rollout today by a telecommunications manufacturer and paid next month. A cutoff of credit brings all that to an abrupt end. Credit is not discretionary for businesses, small businesses, medium-sized businesses, and of course, we've seen so far, large corporations. Credit is essential, and while there's much talk about the US consumer being in debt, there's insufficient recognition by the news media and the pundits that an increasing difficulty of business to access credit, refinance commercial property, and buy new equipment will deepen and prolong the recession that we've talked about, and we're trying to, you know, we talked about today. The fact is, is that without credit, we choke off lifeblood of all businesses. VEDC is an organization that's been around 32 years. As you can see, we run a variety of business loan programs throughout the city, and of course, in the San Fernando Valley. The fact is, over the next six, over the last 60 days, we've been making one loan a day for the last 60 days. When we talk about being the first resort lender, we actually are the last resort. When we talk about being the first resort lender, we actually are the last resort lender, but people are getting to last resort very, very quickly. You have the businessperson whose HELOC has been basically cut off by WAMU, you know, in mid-stride, and he doesn't have access to it to be able to keep his business going. You have the people who can't get any kind of small business lending. American Express has cut off their credit cards, and small business right now is seeing their credit dry up. What's interesting, you asked before about the kind of banking reality. What we're seeing right now, and I'll give you an example, Bank of America has been very, very aggressive in terms of making loans, commercial real estate loans, 50%, 60% loan to value. Great credit, good cash flow, great loan to value. However, if you were, say, weaker on the credit, or weaker on the collateral, or maybe even the cash flow, it's not an issue as it has been in the past where you basically have risk, basically risk-based pricing. The more the risk, the more you pay. Now, you simply don't get it. You're simply told no. People who have the best credit, the best collateral situation, the best cash flow, will get lent to at competitive prices. Those who don't will not get one point, or two points, or three points higher than prime. They simply won't get any credit. And that's what you're seeing right now with all the major financial institutions. The people who are calling us up and saying, "My credit's okay. Yes, I may have had a burp on my cash flow, and I have great loan to value, but I've been told no. I don't get it." Got a call today from a franchisee or in 100 different, 100 different hamburger chain restaurants across the country based here in Los Angeles, based in the Valley, calls us up today, and the program that's been basically run by another large institution is simply cut off, simply terminated. You have auto dealers who are trying to refinance their commercial property with probably 60% loan to value. And the fact is, is that as we see the auto dealer, the major auto manufacturers, GMAC, Chrysler, and Ford, are all cutting off their financing to auto dealers. And today in the paper today, the possibility of 400 auto dealers going out of business. They're going out of business because their credit is being cut off both from their manufacturer and they can't get it locally. We have a crisis. And in 1994, post-1994 earthquake, VEDC assisted 10,000 businesses with $125 million in SBA disaster relief. And the fact is, is we're going to go very, very quickly, get very, very quickly to a situation where you have a financial disaster going on for small and medium-sized businesses. That's not, then will therefore compound sales tax issues, business tax issues. You're going to have people not paying their property taxes, going delinquent for multiple periods of time, because when it comes down to it, they're going to simply be challenged just to meet the payroll. We've been working very closely with the Community Development, Economic Development Division to come up with a product that will provide lending up to $450,000 to businesses to support inventory, support working capital, support equipment, and support accounts receivable. It's a program that we have both together, come together and said, "This can be done from the lessons we've learned in the past, be it LACDB or other lessons. We know now how to lend and how to lend aggressively, but how to lend with prudence," because not our desire to basically lose money. And we basically estimated a reasonable loan loss on a program that initially could be funded at $15 million, could easily put out five to 10 of that before the end of the year, and has the potential to create up to 1,500 jobs. By helping businesses, by, you know, create and save 1,500 jobs for businesses we already have here in the city of LA. But for their ability to access credit, they will have to close up shop, lay people off, and in some cases, go bankrupt. We are, VEDC has, right now, we're seeing a huge influx of requests of financing from as low as $15,000, as high as a half a million dollars. And this city, unfortunately, has been without a citywide small business loan program since the demise of the LACDB. We encourage the city council and the mayor's office to basically move this program forward as an immediate and positive, you know, positive response to the credit crunch.
How you can collateralize, where's the source of funds?
The--
Source of--
Section 108. I'm sorry. I missed that part right there. Section 108. The Section 108 program lends itself to a loan that would be made from the city to VEDC, and VEDC would lend to the borrowers, in compliance with all the necessary regulations and all the federal regulations. We have years of experience in managing federal EDA revolving loan funds, and we were the agency that actually took over and successfully liquidated the LA Community Development Bank loan portfolio.
Yeah. And where is that sitting now? The program you're putting together?
Mayor's office.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And I'll add that as an instruction, then we'll ask the mayor to report back to the Budget and Finance Committee on that loan program that they talked about.
On this last--
As part of progress, okay? All right. With that, I thank everybody for their attendance today. Certainly, it was enlightening, if not fun, but it's the way we're in, and you've helped clarify greatly, I think, the concerns we have and the things we need to be doing. So I thank you all, particularly Boil and Dr. Sidhu. I know you've been running all over the county. I'm sure you're very, very popular on the speakers' bill right now. We appreciate your being here, all of you. Thank you very much. If there's anyone who wants, wish to address the committee on an item that was not discussed, please come forward. If not, the minutes adjourned. Thank you very much.